Village of Evendale, town meeting to order. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to nominate a moderator for this evening's meeting?
I nominate Dr. Hugh McKinnon.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Any other nominations? Move that nominations be closed. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the Dr. McKinnon is the moderator. Dr. McKinnon will take the microphone.
Thank you, Councilman and Mayor Finan. I'm Hugh McKinnon. I'm the Chair of the Community Improvement Corporation for the Village of Evendale, and I'm honored to be invited to serve as the moderator. The next item on the agenda is the election of the Secretary. I'll entertain a nomination for the Secretary for this meeting.
I'll nominate ICRC, the Service Secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
ICRC has been nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll entertain a motion to select ICRC by application.
Aye.
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 Okay, ICRC will serve as our Secretary for this meeting. Meeting is being video recorded, is being live streamed. And I'll just remind people, there are a couple of ways, if you have questions you want to submit for answering later in the meeting, and you were watching us online, you can submit questions by phone. That's probably the easiest way for you unless you're quite possible with computer communications. The phone number is the main Evendale number, area 513-563-2244. And two of the Evendale staff members are available to answer the phone and related questions here. You can also submit them by email at communications@evendaleohio.org.
Hugh, excuse me, he can't hear you. I don't know if your mic is on or not. Thank, thank God we had an engineer in the room.
Where shall I start over?
Where did that drop out?
Where should I start over? Okay. Sorry about that, we had a microphone problem. I'm Hugh McKinnon. I'm the Chair of the Community Improvement Corporation for the Village of Evendale, and I'm honored to serve as the moderator. We had a vote to elect the Secretary for the meeting, and ICRC was selected to be the Secretary, and they will have a video and audio recording of this meeting, which will, I assume, be broadcast from time to time, but will also be available to watch. If you're following this meeting online, it's live streaming, you can submit questions for later in the meeting, either through the Evendale main telephone number, area 513-563-2244. And we have Evendale staff members accepting those phone calls, and they will relay the questions here. You can also do it by email. The email address is communications@evendaleohio.org. Probably the easiest way to do that is to be on the Evendale Village website, which is evendaleohio.org. Through that, you can reach Evendale's Facebook page, which is where this meeting is being streamed, or the, or the email and the phone numbers listed there. Okay? Next item on the agenda is opening greetings and comments from our esteemed Mayor, Honorable Richard Finan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome to all of the people in the Village of Evendale for this unusual town meeting. It's very different than our usual town meeting with maybe four, five, or 600 people, and with dinner to follow, but we're going to make the best of it here. And we're going to tell you a little bit about what's happened in the village in the last 12 months. And we have, as Dr. McKinnon says, provided for questions as is required by the Charter. For any of you who wish to ask them or comment, you can make them to the, to the, to the numbers and the methods that were described to you by Dr. McKinnon. Okay. Please turn the...
So you're going to do your presentation first, or are you going to do it at the end?
I'm going to do it now. Who's flipping the, who's flipping the, okay, flip. This is all of the members of council. The Vice Mayor, Jeffrey Albrink. Council President, William Putoff. Council Member, Christian Schaefer. Council Member, Elizabeth McDaniel. Council Member, Thomas Sextro. And Council Member, Carolyn Smiley Robinson. Just to bring you up to date on the demographics of the village, we are about 4.74 miles in radius. We have 2,840 residents of the village. This is, this was as per 2018, and we have 22,000 daytime population. And you can note some of the excellent businesses that we have in the village. GE Aviation, Formica, Gold Medal, Kinetic, Enable Injections, all the way down to Cincinnati Workforce, St. Rita School for the Deaf, and the Boy Scouts of America. We had, this year, a challenging time as a village, but we have continued to comply with the local and state mandates and their guidelines. We have worked on it weekly. We've had five memos go out to our employees and staff and officials detailing policy on COVID. We've implemented wearing masks, and personal hygiene, temperature checks, cleaning protocols, and so forth. We've had live streaming online, just as this is, of our council meetings and our CIC meetings, and the other meetings that we've carried on while we struggled through this particular time. We've adjusted our programming services, particularly the Recreation Department and Cultural Arts have become very innovative at what they've been able to do. We've had a number of drive-through events, such as the art show and Halloween and things like that, and all have gone very well. We have received several sections of cores, cares funds, rather, cares funds, and we have been using those in the various places to supplement our regular budget. And we've worked with the local chamber to disseminate small business assistance as to what, when, what was necessary within the village. Some of the pictures on the, on this slide will show you what the art exhibit was, and the spacing, and so forth and so on. As to Arrow Hub... Recap, just to bring you up to date, we have 50 acres for advanced manufacturing available, upscale center, the master plan, which was completed in 2018. Estimated will have 3,500 new jobs with 1 million square foot of floor space, and hopefully 2.9 million of income tax coming in. We've continued with meetings and negotiations with multiple prospects. However, it's been a bit of a slow pace, again, due to the COVID virus, but we have plowed ahead with our development. The next slide shows the new roadway and utilities that were completed in December of 2019. And it also shows you Phase Two of the roadway, which is the result of the $5 million bond issue issued by the village for infrastructure, $900,000 of jobs in ODOT grants funds, and $2 million jobs Ohio grant pending, which has been submitted. The new sewers, I believe, and underground utilities are all in. Curbs should begin very shortly, and we hope to see blacktop in a couple of weeks. The first new business in the Arrow Hub is Modle Shop. The 40,000 headquarters was completed. It's $4 million of new investment, and they plan to expand to 100,000 square feet in 15, give or take, years. They have 60 employees today, and they hope to go to 154 employees with a full-time salary of $69,000. Also pending, and has been, not been helped by the COVID, is the relocation from Evendale Commons Drive of Kinetic Vision. It's an expansion from 28,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet, and it's a proposal for a $10 million new investment. They will, they will add 60 employees with a salary of $90,000, and they are hoping to proceed by sometime in the next five or six months that they'll be ready to go. They have a lot of employees working from home right now, 80% of their workforce, and so the owner is a little, little bit on tender hooks as to exactly when he's going to start the building. I think a lot of you have heard a lot about the police firing range. It's been in the news of late. It's 29 acres owned by the City of Cincinnati, but it's located in Evendale. It was originally a private shooting range, and just for information purposes, there's been rumors about it, but Evendale did not sell or donate the land for the, for the range. Back in July of 2019, some of our neighboring communities wrote, asking for the range to be moved. Evendale has offered to facilitate the problems, to facilitate the problem and, for an acquisition for redevelopment and become part of Arrow Hub. The City of Cincinnati Council held public hearings to begin exploring those options, one of which I attended, spoke, and now alternative locations for the gun range are being explored. Next, you have one solid development in Evendale, which was Silco. They have over a 17,000 square foot office space now on Medallion, or on Medallion Drive. They are expanding to, we sold them 5.4 acres that exists on Reading Road by Inwood, and they're going to expand to 40,000 square foot facility. It's an estimated $5.5 million in new investment. They're adding 40 new employees, additional payroll of $5.1 million estimated over three years. The land purchase agreement was executed in August, and September, construction began. You can see some pictures on the screen of the looks of the building. We were, we worked with them very hard to get a building that was appropriate for Reading Road, and we also created a community reinvestment area to enable a 15-year, 50% property tax incentive. Just as an aside, they have sold their building to another company called Ace Store and Trucking and Rigging, and they will be occupying that building as soon as the new building for Silco is done. Some people raised the question of, why didn't we just leave the green space on Reading Road? Well, that, those spaces were bought for two reasons. Number one, to get rid of some of the lighted properties that existed on Reading Road. But they were also bought as a land banking process for redevelopment at a future date, and that's exactly what we are doing with that project. Down on the south end of town, Formica has received planning commission approval for 37.94 acre lot split to facilitate a new Port of Cincinnati Authority for future industrial development. Evendale is currently working with the port and others on site options, flood plain mitigation. It is in the flood plain, and so therefore, it needs work. Onto GE Aviation, our largest taxpayer in the community. They have a total of $767,000 in investments this year. Compare that to 2019, when they had $71,000 in new investments, and, I'm sorry, 19.8 million in investments. 2018, 7.3, 2017, 9.3. Frankly, there's just not a lot going on over there, and we've all read in the paper about the problems in the situation, situation with GE Headquarters. We received a warrant letter from them earlier this year, which told us that there were going to be 47 part-time jobs eliminated, 558 full-time jobs, and those are gone. So that, and, we'll tell you a little bit more about the fiscal situation there. However, in 2020, we've had some new residents go up, and are going up or have gone up. Number one, place on Moller, it's Moller Woods, they call it, it's a corner of Moller and Cooper Road, a second house has been, building permit has been taken out, taken out for it, supposed to have a $400,000 evaluation. Inwood Drive, we sold the other lot up on the hill to a couple that's going to build a $250,000 house there. On Cooper Road, there's a $475,000 house going up. Twilight Drive, where I think Farm, Fawn Run comes into Twilight, that is a $324,000 house. And on Glendale-Milford Road, which is right opposite Givernay, that is, got, going to have a $500,000 house that's going to be raised on that property. Through the Valley, work is continued on that, the finalizing lane widening, Glendale-Milford Bridge, custom fencing has all been done. A new public road aviation way, it's called, has been put in along the GE, along the GE campus. And Vision Way and Shepherd Lane overpasses have been removed and completed and approval. The overpass over Glendale-Milford Road, you can see a picture to the right, it has been finished. We have the logo and the name of Village of Evendale across the top of it, and it presents a rather imposing structure. It's going to be lit. In addition to that, we have two towers that are going to go up just as soon as we can get the traffic stopped long enough for them to do it. In the Duke Pipeline, 2020, Evendale filed written objections. It's still, they were overruled, it's still continued. OPSB held evidentiary hearings. Evendale reaffirmed its opposition. The decision is now under appeal to the Ohio Supreme Court, and as of this date, it has not been decided. In the meantime, we have succeeded in getting them to reduce the size of the line and shift it to location of Glendale-Milford Road to the, to the center of Glendale-Milford Road. No property taxes, by the way, will go to Evendale, because we do not have a real estate property tax, but it will go to the school district and some other entities that have that tax. That, I think, finishes my remarks, and I'll wait for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to take questions now? If, we'll wait, have them all at the end. I just, a personal word, as the Chair of the CIC, I just want to say what a pleasure it is, and I know we all feel blessed to live in this village where activity continues, albeit at a lower level, in this economic situation associated with the pandemic. But we feel fortunate that properties continue to move, things are being developed, and we are, I think, the exception rather than the rule for a lot of communities around us. Can't say enough about the ability of the mayor, the council, the staff here in Evendale. It's a pleasure to, to be able to work here. Any comments from council members on the items the mayor has talked about at this point? If not, we'll move to our next presentation. Honorable Councilwoman Elizabeth Beth McDaniel is going to speak about Gorman Heritage Farm.
Good afternoon. I guess it's still afternoon, it's not evening yet. It is my pleasure to give the report on the Gorman Farm. I met with Tricia Watts, the Executive Director of Gorman Farm, this week to get ready for this report, and as I was walking up to the farm and started looking around, I remembered how lucky we are here in Evendale to have this treasure right in our backyard. I plan to take advantage of this and plan my walking routes to visit the farm more often. Residents are always welcome to walk the paths on the farm. So 2020 has been a challenge for everyone, and the farm is no different. In these unprecedented times, no one had heard that in quite a while, Gorman Heritage Farm has pivoted implementing policy and procedures to be able to continue to meet their mission to educate about agriculture, nutrition, sustainability, and the environment in a way that is safe for staff, volunteers, and all of their guests. I never really thought about this, but agriculture is an essential business. So during the quarantine, when only essential businesses were working, staff were on-site planting produce and tending to the livestock. The staff had to come up with creative ways to continue to meet their mission, and also meet the needs of families who were trying to cope with staying at home. They held a drive-through spring plant sale, which helped bring in some revenue, as well as continue to meet their mission in helping people learn to grow their own food. As families started looking for outdoor activities, the farm made it easy with online reservations to be able to visit the farm and know that it was a safe activity for their family. Because of this, daily admissions and farm memberships are higher than ever. The staff came up with creative ways to continue some of their most popular events. The Row-by-Row Dinner became a row-by-row-to-go event. We drove through at our assigned time and picked up a delicious farm-fresh dinner to take home and enjoy. The event was sold out with 250 dinners served. The Sunflower Festival, as we all know it, could not happen this year, but the farm was able to host the sunflower, not festival. They worked with Hamilton County Health Department and were able to provide a safe and fun experience for around 3,500 guests over a span of three days. The Education Department had a big challenge to continue the mission and had to get very creative pivoting their educational programs. Personally, I was not very optimistic back in May when they were talking about being able to hold the summer kids' camps, but the farm staff found a way and pulled it off. They had 310 kids over eight weeks with not one positive COVID-19 case. The farm-to-classroom programs continue, although this fall, they were all being shifted to outside, so they are now farm-to-schoolyard programs. Hopefully, even more schools will be able to Hopefully, even more schools will be able to welcome the education staff to their schoolyard in the spring. A small number of on-site field trips have happened with much smaller groups. The Girl Scout programs took a spring hiatus but have returned this fall, and there are two additional dates lined up in November. The farm is actively promoting and marketing different ways that they can meet teachers' needs, including virtual programming, where students can learn on the farm either through live or pre-recorded video programs. The farm is excited to continue the relationship with Princeton Schools, with support from the Princeton Education Foundation to have every fourth-grade class from Princeton visit the farm to learn about local Ohio history. Hopefully, these classes will be able to visit next spring. Something you can all participate at the farm is the farm's CSA, Community Supported Agriculture. You can purchase a subscription at the beginning of the season and get a basket of freshly harvested vegetables for 26 weeks. If you are interested in this, you need to email now to be added to the waiting list for 2021. The farm also raises limited amounts of pork, beef, chicken, and turkey for pre-order, as well as eggs, which are available to purchase at the farm shop in the Interpretive Center. You can also cut your own beautiful flower bouquets at the farm. Cutting garden subscriptions are now available for purchase online for summer 2021. In closing, I encourage everyone to visit the farm and see what is happening right here in Evendale. Please keep in mind that the farm is not actually a department of the village, but it is a separate nonprofit organization. The village does provide some funding, but the rest must be earned and raised by the farm. Village residents get free daily admission to the farm, but I do encourage you to become members and donors of the farm. Check out their website at gormanfarm.org and follow them on Facebook to get the most updated information about their programs. Let's all support this treasure right here in our own backyard. Thank you, and now, back to Dr. McKinnon.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDaniel. Our next presenter will be our Honorable Council President, Mr. William Bill Putoff. And Bill is going to talk about cultural arts and recreation activities in the village.
Thank you, Dr. McKinnon. First, I'll talk about the Recreation Department highlights for 2020. Although a majority of this year's events, programs, and facilities have been impacted by the pandemic, many positive things have occurred. These include extensive cleaning and repairs of the facility, including painting projects, floor restorations, and organizational projects when the Recreation Center was closed. In addition, new mesh fireplace doors and safety valves were installed in each of the Evendale rooms, and the back rooms' gas logs were also replaced. New programs offered, including the Chalk Fest, Backyard Community Campout, Municipal Complex Walking Challenge, the Family Goose Chase Scavenger Hunts, esports, online gaming tournaments, flower deliveries for seniors, Christmas in July, July 4th 10K Step Challenge, Good Neighbor Awards, Tuesday Tunes at the Open Air Shelter, trivia night, Drive-Thru Boo, Zoom Events with our teen group, a Stability, Strength, and Balance class, I think that might have been up at the shelter house, Silver Sneakers, Outside with Abby's Children's Programs for the three- through five-year-olds, Boo Treat Bags for seniors, and more programs to come through the end of this year. They had to get really creative, but they did a great job. Facilities were able to be reopened, including the Fitness Center, tennis courts, the pool, the playgrounds, the pool concession stand, the sand volleyball courts, the gymnasiums, and both shelter houses. Although we did have to make some adjustments to how we did things, we were still able to utilize those facilities. Programs we were able to still offer include group exercise classes, swim team, baseball, three men's golf leagues, Dog Day at the Pool, Fall Soccer, Free Yoga at the Pavilion, Adult Tennis, Youth Sports Camps, Byline to Pie Open Houses, Morning Adult Swim, Pickleball, Movie in the Park, Book Club, and Youth Basketball. Some other news that recently occurred, we had Fit Meese LLC. They will be taking over the operation of our Fitness Center effective January 1st. Evendale resident Michael Meese is the president of the company, and he is excited for this opportunity. The village is very appreciative of the work and dedication of Lifestyle Essentials, which has provided this service to our members for the last 12 years. Kind of a nice note, in 2019, we did some pool repairs in the main pool, which was an ongoing water leak for many, many years, costing us a lot of money. We have evidence that the 2019 pool repairs on the main pool resulted in approximately a $24,000 savings in our, this summer's water bill over at the pool. So it was a great find by them. Let's see, and the last item I have for the Recreation Department, the playground improvements include a new playground turf on both the two- through five-year-old playground and the five- through 12-year-old playground. A new swing set with six swings has been purchased along with the playground turf, and this should be installed in the next two months. One of the six swings will include a multi-generational friendship swing, which allows kids and adults to swing together. So that is my report for Recreation. For the Evendale Cultural Arts Center and the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion, what a year we had. Looking over our plans for 2020, we had lined up an ambitious year of bringing the arts to Evendale. We kicked off January and February strong with an art workshop led by internationally-known artist and former Evendale resident C.F. Payne. We had full slates of all sorts of arts, dance, acting, and music classes. We were off on art ventures to the Cincinnati Art Museum and to the King &amp; I at Laca Media Dinner Theater. Our creative partnerships continued to grow and thrive. Playhouse in the Park brought us Stuart Little in February, and the Tri-County Players brought live stage theater to the village with their hilarious play, Flamingo Court: Life in Three Conduits. But suddenly, we found ourselves in the middle of a pandemic and forced to close down for several months. While our hallways and performing spaces may have been quiet, our instructors and partners soldiered on and figured out new, safe, and exciting ways to stay connected, stay creative, and stay healthy. We dug deep to figure out ways to bridge this new world of masks and limits, areas in which the arts had little experience. The arts are expressive and loud and thrive on camaraderie and closeness, all things we weren't able to do. The creativity often strikes in the darkest times, and there we found inspiration to bring the arts to our residents in new and definitely different ways. We created arts-delivered kits available for porch drop-off to keep arts going at home. Armed with sanitizer and masks, we opened our doors and windows and held small camps for writers and performers. Our exhibits went online to an even wider audience to see and enjoy. We found a new way to host our annual Big Art Party with our COVID-19 Drive-Thru Edition, featuring our very own Evendale artists, musicians, dancers, actors, and more. The Tri-County Players returned to the stage, aka the Founder's Pavilion, with an entertaining mystery thriller, Vintage Hitchcock. And just this past weekend, we featured our first outdoor art exhibit, featuring the photography displayed on the pool fence for all to see and enjoy. Work continues on our new theater space at the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion, while we continue to enhance and upgrade the Cultural Arts Center. Thank you to all our residents, artists, and friends who supported and embraced these new events and ways of experiencing the arts. We can't wait to see what new adventures 2021 will bring.
Thank you, Councilman Putoff. You know, I've often thought in previous town meetings, it's great that our residents get updated on what's going on in the village, and it's too bad that everybody else doesn't get to hear these presentations about all the great things that happened in our village. And especially in a time when the pandemic makes us stay closer to home, this place is not a bad place to be. Next, we're going to hear about Service Department activities and Engineering activities from the Honorable Councilman Thomas Tom Sextro.
Thank you, Dr. McKinnon. As Dr. McKinnon stated, I will be reporting on our Service and Engineering Department. James Jeffers is our Service Director and Engineer for this department. In addition to the typical services provided by this department, such as snow removal, grass cutting, brush chipping, special pickups, and maintaining the village buildings, the department has completed several projects and are continuing others for the enhancement of the village. Here are some of those projects, there's actually nine of them. The first is Through the Valley. We call it Through the Valley, but it's actually the improvements of Interstate 75. The Ohio Department of Transportation is nearly completed with the construction of Interstate 75 from Glendale-Milford Road to Shepherd Avenue. It is anticipated that the completion of the project and the decorative enhancement of the bridge, or to the bridge, will be finished by spring of 2021, so we have about another five to six months to see the completion of this project. The next project is the Arrow Hub Boulevard Phase II roadway. When I speak of the Phase II, it's actually the north side of Glendale-Milford Road, which is where St. Rita's is located, but this project is constructing a roadway and utilities from Glendale-Milford to Oak Road. This is for the creation of the advanced manufacturing development on property owned by the village. This roadway is expected to be completed by the end of this year. Next project is the Duke Pipeline. The pipeline is currently being appealed by the Ohio Supreme Court while we await its ruling. However, Duke has submitted construction plans for the pipeline and reviewed for compliance with our, our being Evendale's permit standards. If this route is approved, it will run down the westbound lane of Glendale-Milford Road, which is the north side of Glendale-Milford Road. It would also start approximately June of next year, so Duke would be able to complete the Glendale-Milford portion between the two school sessions, so between spring and summer. We will continue to update the community as more information becomes available. Next project, completed by this department, is Shred Day. The department assisted in the annual shred day, including household and electronic recycling. The year totaled 78,000 pounds, so that's 39 tons of recycled materials, so Evendale is 39 tons lighter than the previous year. We collected 67% more than the previous year, so in total, we collected more than 13 tons of paper, 10 tons of household waste, and 15 tons of electronic waste. So great job by the department on another great shred day. LED light replacement is the next project. The department has completed replacing the internal light fixtures with energy-efficient LED fixtures in all of the village buildings. The department will also be installing new LED fixtures in the path lighting along Redding Road, both in the south and north directions. Next project is the Police Department Improvements. Our building maintenance department, our maintenance renovated the police department's locker room, exercise area, and some common areas. Also, the repaving of the municipal complex. The village has completed the resurfacing of the entire municipal complex with the exception of the Recreation Center area. This area will be completed later this week. It was delayed due to weather. Next project is equipment. The Service Department received a replacement front-end loader and dump truck earlier this year. The loader is a piece of equipment that is necessary for loading the salt onto our vehicles for snow removal. As well, we have ordered a new dump truck, and we anticipate receiving this in the middle of 2021. We have one anticipated project for 2021, and that is the Glendale-Milford Road Bridge Towers. The clock tower bases have been completed as part of the interstate project, but the village intends to construct the remaining portions of the tower system for the bridge, creating an exciting gateway into the community. We plan to start this this December and be completed by spring of next year. So with that, I thank the Maintenance and Engineering Department with James and his team. Thank you. Can I take a mic?
Thank you, Councilman Sextro. And next, we'll hear about the Fire Department from our Honorable Councilman Christian Chris Schaefer.
It's still afternoon, so good afternoon. We're moving close to evening. The Fire Department has, unlike everybody else, they have to operate 24/7, pandemic or no pandemic, so they're still operating, and they have been operating. The department this year has had some facility improvements. One is they took possession of shipping container. Now, that may not sound like much, but it's going to be used as a training facility and for storing training props. Together with the tower, that'll create an onsite training capacity, and that will increase the department's ISO rating, which could reduce insurance rates for commercial and industrial property. The second thing that we've done to the facility is we replaced the exhaust removal system. We obtained a FEMA grant to do that, and when the trucks are started or the life squad starts, they put out fumes, and the exhaust removal system will remove those fumes from the Fire Department building. Also with the FEMA grant, a station alerting system was installed, and its final testing is currently occurring. What this does is throughout the entire fire facility, it allows the firemen to know when there's a dispatch, and so they can go directly to the trucks and get on their way. The thing that this does is it reduces the time between the dispatch and the arrival on the site. Currently, the average emergency response time for the Evendale Fire Department is four minutes and 44 seconds, and that's 14 seconds better than last year. And the final facility change was a renovation of the women's locker room, and that's been completed. You can't talk about the Fire Department without talking about fire runs and EMS runs. Overall, there were 762 fire details this year, that's 16 That's 16 less than last year. There were about 800 EMS runs, and that's a 23% increase over last year. In the past 12 months, there's been seven fires in Evendale resulting in $100,000 in damage. Additionally, the Fire Department does inspections. So instead of just responding to EMS calls and dispatches for fire calls, they also inspect all the commercial and industrial properties once per year, and these inspections are ongoing. Now, the Evendale Fire Department doesn't just provide services to Evendale. We share services, as do all the other departments around Evendale. We have mutual aid agreements, and with the mutual aid agreements, we have given 182 assists for fire dispatches to surrounding communities. We have received 75 mutual aid services for fire calls from surrounding communities. The EMS is very similar. We've given 64 assists to surrounding communities, and surrounding communities have given us 18 assists. We also have a firefighter, Mark Bond, who participates in Ohio Task Force One. And this is a major thing in Ohio, and it provides where there's a major emergency assistance. And he was deployed twice to the Gulf Coast for Hurricanes Laura and then again for Hurricane Delta. We also have two firefighters, Mark Bond and Bob Lehman, that participate in the Hamilton County Search and Rescue Unit and throughout Hamilton County if they need search and rescue going on. We participate in that, too, and they've been dispatched a couple of times this year. And finally, like everybody else, the Fire Department had to deal with COVID. Chief Howke, the Fire Chief, has been the point person of the village for dealing with COVID. The first thing that happened is we did get a grant. We got $208,000 from the state, which was appropriated from the federal government, and we've applied for another $81,000 from the county. The problem with the CARES Act money is they wanted to get the money out, and so they got the money out, and then they made the regulations after that. And so our fiscal officer, Cynthia Karachi, suggested that it's been an exercise of chasing cats, trying to corral the federal rule changes related to allowability of cost. But they have persisted with the Fire Chief, and they have better clarity now. What really this means is that you have to collect data, and Chief Howke has been doing that, from all the departments, on what is believed to be a COVID-related expense. And then that can be charged against the $208,000 we've received so far, and there will be an audit at some point, and if we don't use that money for COVID-related expenses, we would have to give it back. And so the chief has been in contact with all the departments for where they believe there's a COVID-related expense, and then he logs that and maintains the documentation so that when the audit happens, we'll be good to go. In addition to that, Chief Howke has attended weekly and monthly meetings on the pandemic, and so he advises the rest of the village on the state rules and regulations, the CDC rules and regulations, and the Hamilton County Public Health Department rules and regulations. And these things change as time has gone on, as we've all heard on the news. But from these, the village's internal policies relating to COVID have been created. And each department has turned to him for advice on personnel and anything else related to COVID. So here are the COVID numbers for Evendale. Evendale has had 35 confirmed cases, no confirmed deaths. We have lost some workdays. We lost, and these are when people are in contact with someone with COVID, they have to isolate themselves or quarantine themselves. And so we lost 15 police days due to COVID. We lost five days for firemen related to COVID, and we lost one day of COVID related to a council member. So anyway, but the department itself, the Fire Department itself, had to make significant changes because they're medical providers, and they had to comply with all the regulations dealing with medical providers. And so they've made changes in their protocols in dealing with EMS runs. They modified the Fire Department ambulances by putting plastic between the driver's compartment and the compartment for the patient. And then the cleaning routines have had to be upgraded to meet what the regulations are for medical providers. And so with that, that's the changes to the facilities. That's what the Fire Department personnel have been doing, and those are the responses that we have made through the Fire Department with regard to the COVID pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schaefer. Our fire and police services are among those that we are also thankful to have in this village. Next, I want to turn to our Honorable Vice Mayor, Mr. Jeffrey Jeff Albrink, who will talk about village finances.
Thank you, Dr. McKinnon. Over the last several town meetings, I've had the honor to share the financial condition of the village. We've always walked away from those meetings very confident that the finances are on solid ground, and hopefully I will be able to leave you with this meeting with a similar feeling despite everything that's going on. As most of you know, thanks in large part to our corporate partners, even though it's blessed with the resources to provide the very best services and amenities. Although it may have been tempting, village leadership, from the mayor to council and the department heads, has never taken our good fortune for granted. We have always recognized that any of the companies that call Evendale home could have to adjust employment numbers, whether planned or unplanned. Although downsizing and relocations are always a possibility, and therefore regularly considered, never, ever did anyone ever anticipate a virus could paralyze the world the way it's done in the last eight months. Planning for the what-if, not knowing that what-if would be, or if it would ever occur, was never more important for the village than this year. With that said, revenues to date have been better than expected. Year-to-date earnings, tax receipts are approximately $530,000 behind 2019, despite everything. We were worried that it was going to be a lot worse. 2019 was also a record year, so we're comparing it to a very high threshold. But we're only, we're $440,000 ahead of 2018, and we are $700,000 more than what we budgeted at the beginning of the year. So we are on pace, ahead of pace of where we budgeted. It's the budgeting process that has allowed us to prepare best for 2020. We're very conservative with all financial projections. Over the last five years, actual revenues have exceeded budgeted revenues by more than $1 million a year. And actual operating expenses have been approximately $1.8 million per year less than budgeted. By budgeting income lower and expenses higher over the last several years, we've been able to build a significant reserve to face the what-if. While still investing in the future, we've been able to start with a budget that where it is close to expenses at the beginning of the year, income and expenses are essentially the same. That's kind of the starting point, but by year-end, on average, we've been close to $3 million to the positive. Over the last two years, we've also relied heavily on these reserves, as we spent almost $10 million on major projects, including property acquisition at Landmark, even though costs ODOT and I-75 upgrades, new fire truck ambulance, dump truck that everybody's already mentioned, infrastructure for the new Arrow Hub development, road improvements, resurfacing the village. The reason we've been able to make all these investments in the village, whether it be for future business or for to improve the grounds and the facilities, is because we have developed and built that surplus over the years. During that same period, we've also received approximately $1.5 million from the sale previously of land bank property. Some other council members have been mentioned, some of that, the mayor certainly has highlighted it in his presentation. We've had over $1.1 million in the last two years received by our investment strategies that we amended and revised many years ago, and the rates now allow us to receive almost a little over half a million dollars per year over the last couple of years in simply the dividends and interest that we've received from those investments. Mr. Schaefer mentioned the CARES Act funding. We received, hopefully, when we're through with this, we'll receive almost $290,000 from the federal government to help offset the new and additional expenses incurred by the village in addressing the COVID pandemic. Also, to help fund the development of the Arrow Hub, earlier this year, Evendale issued a $5 million bond. There's been some concern as to why we issued the bond. The bond was at a very favorable rate, approximately 2%, and that bond allows us to build the infrastructure without tapping into our surplus for the Arrow Hub, or at least make a significant contribution to the cost. And it will be paid in large part from the additional taxes generated by those new businesses once that area is developed. With all said, how is the financial status of the village? We currently have a surplus of about $21 million, which exceeds 1.5 times our annual operating expenses. Our projections are that 2002, however, will be more difficult. As to impact of the closures and reduced businesses, we still have to figure that out. We're doing our projections. We will be budgeting much more conservatively than we even have in the past with the concern of how this will impact. We did not see the full, we don't feel we've received the full impact of the COVID shutdowns and the downsizing. A lot of these businesses, they've laid off a lot of people due to the pandemic, but then they've also lost orders, and a lot of their business has now either gone away or been suspended. And so the ability to pull people back, even when there may be a cure or there may be a vaccine, and the medical part of bringing people back to work will be addressed at some level. The business will be much farther behind that reopening because it's going to take, especially a company like GE, you need the engines to be ordered, then you need, and that takes, again, people to start flying more, the demand for the engines to increase, and then the orders was followed. That may be a few years down the road, and so we're going to see that impact, and we're anticipating how that's going to impact the village, and we'll address it as we go on. But we know it's there, but we do have the reserves, like I said, of about 1.5 times our annual operating expenses. We will be tightening our belts even more, especially on some of the larger projects, but we overall are in good shape. I also want to thank Cynthia Karachi, our fiscal director, for all her help. She stays on top of these numbers like no other, and you can ask her at any point, any line item, of where we are financially. She works closely with the front office in trying to anticipate the expenses. She helps everyone here stay on top of the finances, which without that, you don't have any of the other nice amenities. So I want to thank her for everything she does. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Albrink. And for our final scheduled presentation, we will hear from our Honorable Councilwoman Carolyn Smiley Robertson about our Police Department.
Well, according to the clock here in Chambers, I have the honor of saying good evening, as opposed to good afternoon. I'd like to first start with the COVID-19 impact to the Police Department. And much like most of the village, as you've already heard, as well as the country and the world, this pandemic has also affected the Police Department. And for several months this year, in the middle of the year, schedules were really substantially altered to try to minimize exposure to others as well as each other in the Police Department. So new procedures and guidelines were adopted, which continue to this day to serve as precautions toward exposing our police officers and allowing them to engage in daily patrol and calls for service. Undoubtedly, that no aspect of the Police Department's services have been unaffected or untouched by COVID, but we're still serving the community at the usual high standard we've come to enjoy with our Police Department. I'd like to next talk a little bit about reviewing of our procedures, policies and procedures, and the training that our department has done this year. The events of this year have given the department cause to examine community and departmental expectations, as well as an opportunity to review our policies and procedures. This year, Evendale contracted with Lexipol for our policy management company. Previously, we had used the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation, otherwise known as CALEA, for many years. With this, we gained state-of-the-art policy development and Lexipol's unique approach to training policies, which better address the department's need to be a well-trained and responsive agency. And in the aftermath of the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis this year, police departments came under great scrutiny for their policies and procedures, and we saw clearly the benefit of the Lexipol policies that we gained. Police Chief Neil Cordy was very proactive in assisting council and the mayor with reviewing the department's use of force and its associated reporting policies. And I'm very happy to report that Evendale's policies contained language banning chokeholds and included a duty to intervene, which were the major flashpoints around the country that we saw earlier this year. In addition, even though the approach to training had to be modified because of COVID restrictions, the department completed training in the areas of de-escalation, excited delirium, procedural justice, arrests, and search and seizure. There were some, I want to talk about some renovations that have gone on in the Police Department. With the help of the Service Department and Formica, the Police Department underwent a major facelift this year. At the time the department was initially constructed, there wasn't space provided for locker room. And the Service Department had managed to shoehorn, as the chief called it, one within the basement space. But with the approval of the mayor and council, a new locker room was redesigned, and a new workout room were erected. Lockers large enough to accommodate officers' clothing and equipment needs were purchased. And then in the squad room, the Service Department removed 15-year-old carpet and replaced it with laminate flooring, a surface that's much better suited to the wear and tear of the boots that the Police Department wears. Formica, we thank for generously donating a squad room table that serves as a work area, and it tremendously enhances the workroom. And the Police Department is very appreciative of the efforts, not only of Formica, but of the Service Department and the IT Director for the work completed in the renovations. The department had a major, major, major number of personnel changes this year. We lost two officers to retirement, long-term veterans of the department. Jason Shope was a 26-year veteran, and Officer Kevin Weddick was with the village for 33 and 1/2 years. They both retired. And with those retirements, and we know that we will have two lieutenants retiring next year before the middle of the year, so we've had a rigorous hiring process to try to address both the retirement of officers and the anticipation of losing lieutenants to retirement early next year. So as a result of our hiring process, we hired two new officers, Dante Hill and Justin Cole. Officers- Officer Hill was a 12-year veteran of the Cincinnati Police Department, and Officer Cole had almost six years with the North College Hill Police Department. We also rehired Officer Sean McKinney, who had been lured away from us in 2019 by an international company. And he was gone, interestingly enough, one year and one day before he came back, which required him to have to do some additional training because of the one day. We are confident that these officers will serve and represent our community well. And I would also like to add at this point, congratulations to the chief, because this is a pretty major change for a department that's been stable, and to handle all of that and to make sure. I don't, I didn't see any impact to the community. I don't think any of the council members heard of any impact to the, to the community at all, and that's quite a bit of change in, in a department of our size. The last thing I'd like to talk about, I'm going to call messages from the chief. As I'm often reminded by the chief, there's two things every resident should remember every day. Lock your cars overnight. That's the first thing. While the value of what is taken might not be that great, the time and expense of doing things like canceling and replacing credit cards and reporting to credit bureaus can be avoided. So number one, lock your cars. Number two is that there's no shortage of new email, phone call, and internet scams out there being perpetrated. And if you have any doubt about a call, email, or any solicitation you consider as suspicious, please call the police department and let them investigate first. And finally, well, not finally, I have one more thing after that. I would like to remind everyone that they're always welcome to take advantages of services offered like the, the shred day, vacation home checks, residential security analysis, and the prescription Dropbox. But lastly, I'd like to end with the quote from the police chief himself. In closing, as always, we recognize that our ability to be an effective law enforcement body is altogether dependent upon our communication with the residents and the businesses we serve. We are proud of these relationships we have within the community and encourage everyone to keep that dialogue open. And that is our report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smiley Robertson. Those are the scheduled reports for this meeting. I'll first ask if any council members have any comments or questions on other members' reports. Seeing none, I'll turn to our village clerk, Ms. Barbara Ross. Have we received questions that we need to respond to?
Yes, a question from Resident Patty Bonham. Can you please update us on the coyote situation?
A question from Resident Patty Bonham. Can we please be updated on the coyote situation in the village?
It's bad. And I don't think we've been able to continue the program very well at all. We had, part of the program was located, excuse me, at Gorman Heritage Farm, and due to circumstances where they needed the use of the building, we had to cease that part of the program. Our program also involved some land at GE, some sites there, and also due to other problems with the program, we had to cease those sites. As far as I know, we are not at all involved in a coyote program at this time. And that's not because we don't need it. They are prolific everywhere. It's just, it's not worked out to our benefit.
Thank you, Mayor Finan. Ms. Ross, any other questions? Ms. Ross is indicating there are not any other questions. Is there any other business to be brought before the meeting? If not, before I call for adjournment, I want to acknowledge the people who've made this meeting possible and made it run so smoothly. Village clerk, Ms. Barbara Ross, Director of Administrative Services, Mr. David Elmer, Director of the Service Department and Village Engineer, Mr. James Jeffers, in the office, our clerks, Teresa Reader and Kathy Kincaid, and our IT Director, Mr. Brandon Shaw. I also want to thank ICRC for serving as the secretary recording this meeting. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for your attention to this meeting.
Let's see.